Special Town Board meeting to order at 7:05. Do you stand for pledge leaders? Pledge leaders to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all." So, couple of housekeeping items I just want to clear up real quick and then we'll get to the main purposes of the meeting. So, the planning board sent a memorandum out. Nick, did you get it yet? You probably take this one like a line. So, basically, the planning board on July 24th passed a resolution requesting the town board to direct the town code enforcement officer to make inspections as appropriate with this respective act of special use permit per our laws. Notify users, notify holders of expired SUPs of their obligations under the Prince Town zoning laws. So, I'm not sure if the actually town board needs to direct to do this, Nick. I think it's probably part of your normal job activities.
Yeah.
What are these? What are these job activities?
Well, what are, I gotta know what they are, that's all.
Oh, I'm sure the planning board will...
Yeah, the planning board should know what that is.
Yeah, I'm sure there's supposed to be a file of ongoing or, I don't know, Laura, can we create a folder for special use permits?
I think Pat said that she had a list of all these.
I have one.
Alright. Alright, so hopefully maybe by the next town board meeting, we get an initial report on them. Any questions from the board?
Were they something really pressing or...
Are they something really pressing? I don't know which ones are open, which ones aren't. But...
Two expired.
Yeah, a couple of them expired, so...
Yeah, you can come in and give them...
There's nothing on here that says what they are. That's why I was wondering what they are.
Oh, so Pat's got copy of them?
Practically all the special use permits we've issued over the years have conditions imposed on them and have probably annual inspection requirements. And some, you know, they're in perpetuity, but they have to pass an inspection every year. And some are just five years, you know, certain ones are five years long, certain ones are two years long. But most of them are, have no expiration on them, but they're supposed to have an inspection every year.
Yeah, but I mean, is it something that's really odd?
I don't know.
I mean, I'm trying to find out where, what, what's the ones that you're worried about?
I don't know, I mean, I'm worried about all of them. They all have the conditions.
But what are they?
So, nobody's gone to make sure the conditions are being met. And so, that could be a problem.
Whose is it's what I'm asking?
Who's, whose special use permit?
Yeah.
Well, I don't want to have this meeting, I mean, it was just an action, you know, I just wanted to mention it. It's up to Nick to and the planning board to figure it out. You know, there's been special use permits issued. The law says they gotta be updated. Hopefully figure it out. The second piece of business I want to touch base with is on the scope of work for the state police barracks. It's been like 14 months, so probably want to even go on before season's over. Went to two years, so Lou, looks like you provided it?
Yes, sent them out to eight contractors.
Good.
Received one back, he wanted to come up and look at it. Haven't heard back from a lot of them yet. Some of them are interested, some were not interested at all. Two of them hung up the phone on me. Said they weren't interested in doing any work for Prince Town.
Alright. So, when do you think we'll be able to close on that?
Hopefully by next meeting.
Alright.
We get three proposals and they're all under the same thing, the scope of work. And I think it's pretty easy to finish over there on what I asked for.
Good.
I don't know if anybody else wants to say it.
Alright. So, the main purposes of this meeting is to talk about, in a sense, general code. General code, the company, E-code, the product. So, that's in progress. I think everybody had concerns that we weren't touching these three chapters, you know, they were voted on, they were voted down, actually it was a tie, so the resolution died. Resolution was to accept or edit any textings edited as suggested by the general code. Again, Bob, you weren't here, so the vote was two to two, the motion died, so there was no change in those, these three chapters. But again, I guess my understanding, and I want to try to clear up, there's been a lot of misconceptions, misunderstandings about general code and what we're trying to accomplish here. And I think, Bob, you kind of said it, you know, you're worried about us not trying to touch these or talk about them, so that's really why I set this call up. Even though the ZRC and Paul Golding's teams are continuing to work on them, you know, every other week or every two weeks, three weeks, whatever it is, which again, I requested the town board to actively participate in the discussions with the ZRC. That is the standard process as to zoning laws. It's been in town for decades. The zoning review committees, you know, work to work, they do the process, and they present to the town board. But, you know, to help this and to hopefully relieve some of your concerns, you know, Doug, Lou, and Bob, you know, I said, alright, well then, you know, I made the commitment that to you, Bob, last meeting, or after the meeting, that, okay, if we don't want to wait for Paul, then we'll, we'll jump into this and try to help and move this along a little bit. You know, and a couple of other things, I mean, I want to touch on, so, general code, the company, and E-code, the product, like Ford is a company, the Mustang is a product. It's a tool. It's an online tool where you go to reference your documentation for the town. Thinking of it as a tool, like, I'll use a couple of examples, so Doug, I mean, you know, 50 years ago, you probably didn't have, I'll use my own example, when I grew up, my parents didn't have a gas lawnmower, it was a push mower. So, until I was 12, I had to push and cut the lawn. And eventually, they broke in, you know, broke down and got an electric, or not electric, a gas mower. And that made the job a whole lot easier. It really did.
I pushed the hand job myself.
Exactly. So, the good thing about it is you made sure the grass didn't grow too long, but it was still a pain. But the gas mower made the job easier. And I'm sure in the farming community, you know, in the old days, you used to put the plow behind the horse, and I'm sure it was a great workout, but it was a lot of work. And then tractors came along. And you could do five times the work because you invested in the tool. And I'm sure that the, you know, I watch National Geographic, for example, now you got those, you know, gazillion acre farms out in the west, and it's all the tractor GPS driven, I mean, it's just, it's a tool. And that's what E-code is, it's a tool to use for, you know, for the residents, and, you know, that's the era we're in now. So, I'm sure, I'm not sure if you've got a GPS driven tractor, I'm sure you've got a nice tractor that just makes your life a whole lot easier and you get a whole lot more work done by using the tool. Lou, you know, you've got a brand new pickup, it's got, I guess, wireless, you know, speaker sounds throughout the system, I'm sure you use it because it's a good tool. It works. Bob, you know, I'm not too sure about your job, you know, I know you use a cellphone. Use a cellphone because it's used as a landline. You get a lot more work done because it's a tool. That is what general code, the company, and E-code, the product is. It just takes this book and puts it online. That's it. You know, Lou, last meeting or so, you go, well, you know, that $1,400 a year expense for maintenance, well, everything has maintenance, your cars, you know, especially software, $1,400 is not an exorbitant fee. It's actually pretty relatively cheap if you look at it this way. So, let's say we take Nick and Lauren, and, I'm just gonna make up a number, it's not their true salary, let's say we pay them $20 an hour. So, if one resident comes in a week to visit Laura for one hour, and one resident comes in a week and visits Nick for one hour, that's two hours, times 52 weeks, that's 104 hours. 104 hours times $20 an hour is $2,080. That, so now that $1,400 fee, it looks like it's actually cost effective. Never mind that the residents took time to Mr. Dinner or do what they had to do to come down and ask Laura and Nick, like, well, how do I do this, what's the setback, what's the fence height, whatever the questions are, they could have done it online. So, not only did we save the, our residents' time coming down, they could have looked it up online as to pools, fences, and it does the search, it brings it up for you, whatever the example is. So, did we save the residents' time? Yes. Did we save our, our staff labor? Yes. So, it's actually cost effective, not only for the town, but it's cost effective for the residents. You know, again, it's a tool. It makes, it's cost effective, you know, it's just an online tool. Everybody, in this day and age, you know, respectfully, you guys may be not using that more often, but everybody uses computers, everything is online. It is where we, we need to be. We need to bring the town, continue to drive the town forward, and use the tools that are available. All the building codes are online. They're all down in Albany, you just gotta put up New York State Building Codes, Google it, it brings you right to the site, and you can go to all the building codes. All the municipal laws are on, on websites, on websites. Whatever you want is on websites to accept our talent. It's a tool. So, that's enough, that's general code and the product, E-code. You know, we went through the 27 chapters, you know, we agreed on them, we made a couple of changes, that was fine. We got down to these three chapters, you know, again, the vote was no, it was a tied vote, resolution died. The laws stayed the same. The sort of laws stayed the same, there's no changes per suggestions by general code and the product, E-code. So, you know, I'm trying to, what I want to do here is, you know, okay, so we didn't want to wait for Paul and his team, they're, they're marking up the zoning code to align as per standard process throughout the state and in our town, as done three times, to align our zoning code with the comprehensive plan. And let's not, you know, remind that we have a moratorium that we need to continue to work on. But again, what I want to try to do tonight, you know, I know Doug, Lou, Bob, you has had concerns, you know, in these chapters, so that's what I want to do tonight, it's like start, we'll start on chapter 137. We can do it two ways. We can go look at what general code is suggested we remove, or if you guys have, you know, bigger concerns, then I'm gonna suggest that I'll document it and say, what's gonna, the first page here, the first chapter, you don't, or first authorization, you don't like that and want to take it out, I will make a note of it. And what I want to do, is I want, because... So, let me back up here a little bit more. So, I consider our boards, the planning board, the zoning board, and the ZRC, to be overall subject matter experts in the field of land use. They're trained, they've been doing it for 10, 12, 15 years, however long these people have been doing this job, they are the subject matter experts. If you wanted to go to a financial expert to invest in your 401K and your retirement, you go to a 401K expert, or your financial expert, he's gonna give you advice, he's gonna, because this is, that's what he does, he's a financial expert, a subject matter expert. If you want to go to Ford and say, "I need to fix my engine," they're gonna give you advice. You go to your doctor and say, "I got a heart problem, my heart, my chest hurts," he's gonna give you advice. That's what these boards do, they give us advice. They're subject matter experts, then we take that advice, as we should be, because we're supposed to be responsible. Leaders of this town are supposed to be open enough to listen to everybody's input, especially the subject matter experts, on what their opinions are to this. They've done the research, like a lawyer's done it, like a financial expert's done it, like a doctor's done it. They're here to give you advice. And we should be open enough to at least engage and listen to what they have to say, ask them, question them. What was the logic of why this sentence is here? What's the logic? What's the background here? You know, it's about information gathering, and then you have the information, both positive and negative, to make an informed decision. And that's what I want to do tonight. You know, we want to understand what specifically we want to change and why, what's the basis for the change? You know, has there been complaints about it? What's the difference between today and 10 years ago, when it was first, or eight years ago, whatever it was, when it was first passed? You know, are we gonna be so much different than other towns? So, that's why I'm asking you guys. So, I, I set the meeting, I want to go through these, I want to work with you and understand what it is that's so upsetting that we can't talk about it. I mean, some of the stuff, again, has been here for decades. What's changed in the world that is so dramatic that, you know, we can't listen to our subject matter experts, can't listen to, you know, what the county's gotta say, or the state, or anybody else? You know, I just want to make sure we're, we're trying to cover the majority of town. We should be the leaders, we should be protecting the future of the town, you know, the majority of the town. Not necessarily specific people, I mean, you try to consider it, but you know, the bigger pictures, the bigger scope that we need to worry about. You know, we understand property rights, we understand, at least I'm speaking for myself now, that I understand people's rights to do what they want with their property, absolutely. You bought it, paid for it, you're still, you know, in my case, I'm still paying for it. But, you know, is that what the issue is? Is property rights? I don't know. So, what I propose to my three peers is, let's go through these site by site, again, look at two ways, actually, maybe three ways. First off, they reformatted that, so for the, maybe the less computer savvy people, reformatting it, just taking it from, let's use Lou's example. So, Lou wrote this up, it's nice, you know, spaced out and everything, but here's a format where it's kind of highlighted by chapters, paragraphs, there's a style to it, right? We all went to, did English in school, I didn't do so good, but, you know, there is a, a structure to these changes. There's a structure to, you know, how you use your books, like there's a structure to a maintenance manual for your tractor, I'm sure there is, right? You start with maintenance, ongoing maintenance, yearly maintenance, there's a structure to that document. So, that's what, first off and foremost, what they've done, they've restructured or reformatting, maybe in their computer language, they reformatting how you're gonna read them. That doesn't mean they changed the language, they just reformatting it. What I'd like to suggest next is we go through them one by one, we can do it, again, two ways, we can look at just what E-code is suggesting we do, again, which is insignificant and minor changes, as Paul indicated, this just happens to stick in my mind tonight, is changing the word "to family" to "multi-dwelling," or maybe the other way, could be backwards, whatever. But again, it's, you know, maybe change number 12 to a dozen, they're minor changes. We can look at it that way, or, what seems to be a bigger concern is, we can look at it at a more holistic view and say, okay, I don't like 137 dash two, paragraph B. And I'll say, okay, that's fine, tell me why you want to remove, what's the logic, you know, is there complaints? What specifically you don't like about it? You know, what's the basis for the change? You know, what's changed, what's not changed? So, that's what I'd like to do with you guys tonight, is to go through these, try to address, I'll weigh in one more piece. So, once we understand, let's say, 137 two, paragraph B, that you want to remove it, we'll document why you want it removed, I'm gonna suggest that we make these changes, or not make these changes, record these changes, hand them to the planning board, the zoning board, and the ZRC for their input and guidance back to us. That's all we're asking them to do, is like, you guys are subject matter experts, can you take a look at this and provide your feedback to why you want to, you know, why Mike wants to remove paragraph B? They may come back and say, yeah, that's cool, or they may come back and say, you know, that's really a county health requirement, county may have put that in there. And if that's the fact, then that gave us the information and the data to make the decision. Okay, well, it's a county health thing, then we should probably have it in there, because the county's, you know, gonna say something about it. So, that's what I propose, you know, work on, start on tonight, and we just keep going every week, boom, 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 until we, you know, until we're kind of satisfied. And again, working with Paul, because don't forget, Paul's working with the zoning laws too, to support not only the moratorium, but also to support the, the comprehensive plan that, you know, everybody worked on, you know, specifically Bob and Lou, you guys wanted some changes, do those changes, we put in. So, again, it was a little bit painful, but, you know, it's part of the process, there's a little, gonna be a little pain in the process, but, you know, the pain comes good. No pain, no gain. So, Doug, what do you think? Is that fair?
Yep.
You sure? I mean, if you got, if you got concerned, like, you know, I need to hear...
I read this thing all afternoon, okay? When I get done with it, there's, there's stuff in there that I just, I don't understand, number one, and I'll admit that.
Alright.
But when I read chapter 269, whatever it was, and it's saying about having animals in W1 area, take the coals up here, okay? That farm has been there as long as I can remember, and you're gonna tell them they can't farm?
Well, it's a good example, so, when we get, if it's, you know, all due respect, if we get to that chapter, we get to that section, you know, we'll cut it out and say, okay, Doug doesn't like this, and this is his reasons why, and we'll give it to the team, and let them do some research on it. You know, again, maybe it was put in there for a reason, I'm sure they just didn't haphazardly say, do this, you know? I'm sure, because I think it's ZRC that time, and I've got it here somewhere, I was, you know, Paul Hasbrook, Carol McLean, you know, some good people who worked on that, and then, you know, obviously, the board voted on it at the same time, or shortly afterwards anyway, but if that's okay with you, you know? I'm hoping that's fair.
That's fair, but I'm just, I just don't understand how, something that's already been there, they're putting all these stipulations on it, can't put fertilizer down, can't spray the weeds. I, I just don't, they've been doing it for years, that's the part I don't understand.
Well, I used to smoke a lot too, but you said don't do that anymore, so I stopped.
That's your priority.
I know, but it's just...
That doesn't mean that I can't smoke if I want to.
I agree.
I don't smoke, but I did it until I was 42.
Yeah, I hear you, man. But, um, are we in agreement just on the process?
Yeah.
Can we start there?
Yeah. Because we went through all the other chapters and went through every one.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? That's all I want to do.
That's why I'm here. Again, you know, I just want to go back and say, that meeting, Bob wasn't here, it was two to two, you know, the resolution, like all the others, is like, do you accept the changes as suggested by general code? I don't remember exactly what the resolution read, but it was zero zero, so, or not zero zero, it was two to two, so, you know, there's no...
But the thing was, we never discussed none of that.
But we asked that night, we did ask.
We, you said that they're going through the process, now it might take two years for them to get done.
Alright.
Well, do you understand where I'm coming from?
Yeah.
And you want to put this through as is, but they've already went through all the other chapters and went through it, we agreed to it. Now, the last three, you know, you just want to put them through, and then we're gonna change it down the road, when they get done with their process of what they're going to do. That's what you said.
So, okay, so, you know, respectfully, I'm gonna kind of disagree with it, but it's the past, it's, it's gone. All I'm saying is, like, can we move forward here and agree on what we're gonna do?
Yeah.
Joe?
I'm, anybody have objections?
I just want to keep this to the board. Again, if everything's good, we'll just feed it to the planning board, ZRC, and the zoning board for their opinion, again, they're the subject matter experts, and whoever else.
I agree.
Lou?
Yeah, I've looked through, I've gone through this quite a bit, and I don't understand how all of these laws got put in. I spoke with, talking with Doug about it, and he seems to think that these laws were, came from another town, and they were just placed in here way back when, and when they wanted, when they formed the water system. And I don't understand why we would be worrying about what other towns have in their laws, and they were just placed in the town of Prince Town. So, I'm thinking that we should go over every one of them, and a lot of this stuff, and especially on this Route 7 over here, this W1 overlay, is, you, from what all I've read in here, you can't do nothing on this road, at all. And that's, that's not right. That stuff has gotta come out, there have been too many businesses that have been on this road forever.
So, I respect that. What I wanted to be on, so, first off, I hope you're not suggesting that people put these laws in here without following state law and process, that would be a pretty outrageous statement, so I'm...
I didn't say that, I said that they were taken from another town, and they were just lifted.
Well, it doesn't matter, because there, there's a record where it was passed.
That's what I was...
They were passed, it's law, they're filed with the state, but again, we're getting off the subject, are you in agreement?
Yeah, let's go through them all.
Are you in agreement with the whole process?
Yeah, let's go through these last three chapters, just like we did the other ones.
But are you in agreement with the process that will document what's gotta be removed, edited, changed, and handed to them, because they, again, they are the subject matter experts for their feedback and advice?
Well, I can't agree to pass in this.
And say pass?
I can't agree to, to putting my signature to it without these changes going into effect, and I don't know how long that's gonna be. Is it gonna be, that you said it has to be done by December?
Nope, 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 nope. So, again, I want to stop. We're mixing up general code, the company, E-code, the product, that's, that's already in progress. Those 27, 30 chapters are, are being codified now. Codified meaning they're being changed from a hard copy and the edits we made into soft copy. That's already, that's, that's...
Those are other chapters, but these last three aren't.
So...
We should start 137.
Right, I want to get an agreement on, and make sure this process is, because, you know, Doug's got concerned, Lou and I got concerned, you know, it had to pass, it passed the law, it is what it is. You know, I understand we, and we should be able... You know, I understand we, and we should be able to negotiate and, and compromise. This strong-arm stuff is, you know, these people are the experts. I mean, are you in agreement with the process? That we say, chapter number C here, the impact of traffic generated on adjacent roads and property roads, that we don't like it, we just say, can you look at it? Provide the feedback of why you think it was put in there. There's probably a reason why it was put in there. I don't know the reason. All I'm asking is, like, let them provide the research to what we're doing. That's all. And they'll come back and go, there's a reason, and here's the reason. That's all I'm asking.
Well, this code is gonna go into effect then.
No.
You're saying over there that these last three chapters are gonna be placed in here no matter what we do?
That's not what I'm saying, Lou. That's not, not what I'm saying.
What, what is it you're saying then? If they're not, if, if, we're going over these, and these changes gotta be made, right? Before these go into E-code?
No, no, no. E-code, that vote is stale. That vote is stale.
Who signed it, Sam?
Pass the resolution, Lou. Are, are you gonna, uh, so are you in agreement with this? Because I, you know, I don't wanna debate.
Nor, nor the amendments are made, or whenever the amendments are made. The amendments are gonna go into E-code.
Bob?
Okay, I, I don't really have a problem with the process, Mike, but I do wanna make it clear that any changes that are made, we'll have to have a public hearing.
That's, that's the law for the state of New York.
Right, so, what I was, what I have been thinking all along is, if we make these changes, we're gonna have to have a public hearing on this hamlet stuff. Why couldn't we include the hamlet and our changes with these last chapters? Have the public hearing before these are sent in, and, because we can, we can knock these off. And, and I agree with the process. And the board, this board has the final say on any law changes, correct? So, when we get recommendations from these other boards, okay, we have to, yes or no? For getting right or wrong. That's the process. And I just wanna be sure that, you know, that's made clear, too. I don't have a problem with going through it, and I wish we could get started and go through it, hey, see what needs to be changed or taken out, then give it to the other committees, that's fine. And then they can send it back with their recommendations, and then we take it from there.
Right. But, again, the process for general code and E-code, the product, that's gone. That's already in process.
So, what's your say?
So, we're wasting our time? No, no, we're not wasting our time.
You just said it's going through.
But you guys wanna make changes, so let's go, let's make them.
Okay, that's what we wanna do.
Well, you already said that these changes, this book is, this E-code has already been written up with each, these laws that are already in there.
Because they're existing laws. They're existing. If we didn't make any changes to the 27 chapters, they would've went in and came back as they existed, actually, as they still exist.
So, when are these changes gonna be made then? If we ma, if we decide that there's things in here that need to be changed, when are they gonna be changed with the E-code and...
So, we'd have to, we, E-codes will come back in about September, October, with the changes we've already made on the 27, 30 chapters, whatever it was. And that process will go as standard, normal practice to public hearing, and then it'll come back to the board, uh, we'll submit it to the county, we'll follow the regular process, they'll come back to the board, and we'll yate or nay it. Because that's a single and separate process. These processes will follow the same process, right? We'll figure out what we wanna do in chapter 137, and 160 and 200, and do the same thing. Submit it to the, uh, submit it to the public for comment, submit it to the county, following, again, standard law passing per, uh, town municipal law. It'll come back, we'll take public comment, we'll vote on it, we'll change it, or not change it, whatever we do. And then we submit it to, to general code, and they'll incorporate it, and they'll codify it. And we're done. Or, and again, Paul will keep going with his work and suggesting, you know, changes to support the, uh, codes. Again, he's only suggested to us. You know, the board will take action, or not action, or tweak it, or not tweak it, as we see fit. And then, even if Paul submits a chapter in, we do the same thing. We go to public hearing, you know, we take public comment, um, we vote on it, it gets submitted to the county, again, following normal state process. We're not out of process, we're not cheating, we're not lying, we're not doing anything, we're following the process. We're just gonna be, this is like maybe, and I don't wanna combine them, because they're two separate processes. This is like stage one, this is stage two. These chapters are a little more complex than whether, you know, we change fire wardens from a small F to a capital F. That's all. We're, we're taking care of what you guys wanna take care of. We're here tonight to do what you guys wanna do. All right, that's good. Okay, so we're all in agreement, cool. All right, I suggest we start at chapter 37. 137, sorry. Are we using this book? Well... Yeah. So, there's probably a section in there that's got the highlights that, um, were suggested by general code, so we can either accept them, reject them, or, and/or make your own additional changes.
That's what we did in the first...
Yep.
Same thing.
Yep.
All I've asked for, all while we've been arguing about this, that's all I've asked for.
I will take the responsibility for being, um, maybe, A, I'll take the responsibility that maybe I wasn't listening as hard as I should've to, to your concerns. And I'll also take the responsibility that maybe I wasn't as articulate in my responses to you. So, I will take the responsibility that I didn't maybe listen as much as I wanted to, or should have. So, again, my apologies. Okay, so, where do you wanna start? I guess 137, sorry.
Oh, Mike, for large word, I don't have any problems with chapter 137, so I don't know if that'll be good or not.
Paul, where is 137?
That's under the March 25th, 2014, 10.
So, Bob, there's some changes in there by general code, I wanna make sure we're, we're good with that. Did you have any supplements? Did you give your supplements? All right, so, I'm fine reading this out loud? You know, Michael guided me until, and obviously, there's probably a structured way to read these, like, I don't know if it does... Oh, section, section. So, section 137 dash one, authorization. In accordance with section 274 dash A of New York Town Law, the planning board is authorized to review and approve, approve with conditions or disapprove all site plans for uses required by section 137 dash three. We all okay with that? Bob? Lou? Joe?
Yes.
Can I put that as the resolution to the five days? All right, five yeses, thank you.
Doug, you didn't get Doug?
Yes, I did. He nodded, well, he nodded, yeah, I got it. Section 137 two, purposes and review standards. It is the purpose of this local law to provide a means for the town approval of uses identified in section 137 three herein in accordance with the standards listed in this section. Further, the planning board's consideration of each site plan application shall be guided by the following. A, in full conformance of the site plan with standards and requirements of the town zoning and sanitation ordinances, subdivision code, and other applicable local laws and ordinances. Are we okay with those two paragraphs? Doug?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Lou? All right.
You're smoking now.
B, the adequacy and arrangement of vehicular and pedestrian traffic access and circulation, including intersections, road widths, pavement services, dividers, and control devices. Okay to keep, make the three or four of these together, all right? So, C, the impact of traffic generated on adjacent properties and roads. D, the location, arrangement, appearance, and sufficiency of off-street parking and loading. Mr. Doug?
Yeah.
Joe?
Okay.
Lou?
Yeah.
Bob? That's five. Why don't you just read them until somebody says something?
Well, why don't we just go to the issues, our problem?
Nah, I wanna go through these one by one, one by one, one by one. We agree, that's the way we do it. Very, I hope articulate, say, we're okay with this process. All right, so it's not gonna hurt anybody, except for my toe. Uh, E, the location, arrangement, site design, and compatibility of buildings, structures, lighting, and signs. E, section one. New structures should be visibly compatible with existing development to the maximum feasible extent. E two, sitting of structures should avoid obstruction of use from public rights away and should be compatible with existing development. Before we change the page, are you good with those two, three? Uh, Doug? Uh, Joe? Lou?
Yes.
Lou? All right. 137, E three. Sitting of structures on crests of bridge lines should be avoided, and key elements of existing landscape, such as fence line, barns, hedgerows, and fields, should be preserved. F, the adequacy, type, and arrangement of landscape in screening buffer zones in open space. The clearance of mature trees and clusters of trees shall be avoided or minimized for practical. Trees with a diameter exceeding eight inches, measured three feet, measured three feet above the base of the trunk, that must be removed because they are located within the specific area to be built upon, shall be replaced by the equal number of trees with a minimum caliber of one and a half inches unless they're, unless they remain at least three, at least eight trees of at least one and a half inches or larger. Suitable shade trees, species suitably spaced. In agreement? No?
I don't even have that paper.
Page 137 dash two?
Don't have it.
You don't have it?
137...
Yeah, it's right at the top.
...dash three. Radio.
No, it's at the top. At the top of that page. It's in section, no.
Look it over, the top.
F. Section F.
Oh, okay. All right, I understand.
No, I don't agree with that.
So, the adequacy, type, and arrangement of landscape...
I don't agree with number three either.
Who's to say that somebody can't support a house wherever you wanna put it?
Well, so, sitting of structures on crest, ridge lines should be avoided, and key elements of existing landscape, such as fence lines, barns, hedgerows, and fields, should be preserved. It, it doesn't sound like it's a order. Just says, if you can avoid it, avoid it. I don't, I don't think it's saying no. It's just saying, if you can avoid it, avoid it. Why don't we just take that first line out?
Can I just interject? This doesn't apply to residential structures. The site plan review law applies to multifamily dwellings, commercial dwellings, planned residential districts. And the only time it applies to a residential is if you have a residential lot reduction, which means you've applied for, um, getting, building a house on a lot that's smaller than your zoning district requires. And we've had very few of those in town. Does not apply to a single-family house in a residential district. Site plan review only applies to the issue, the, uh, uses under 137 three, which are all listed there. So, if you have a house and you're in a residential district, you can put it on a ridge line, and you can leave or keep as many trees as you want.
So, this is for commercial, you're saying?
Pretty much, commercial, multifamily, and planned residential districts, which we don't have any of. Those are, um, large multifamily-type developments.
Why would you care where maybe somebody puts a commercial building on a ridge line?
Yeah, that's the, that's the way it's written for commercial structures.
I don't think it should be in there, I don't know about anybody else, thanks. So, go back to your process and send it to the boards. All right, so, the question then, the, so, is there just something specifically you wanna change? And what's the basis for the change? Is there a logic that you, you know? Because what I'd like to do is submit to the boards, like, so, Lou disagrees with section three because of the following.
I can't really just recommend removing that.
I'd like to give, it's an exchange of information, because maybe we have a view or a logic of why we wanna make a change, that it would be fair to share with the subject matter experts for why we think this should change. I mean, it's just fair, it's just...
Okay, I was just making a suggestion for...
Yeah, I mean, it's open transparency, communication, and democracy, right? I mean, it's an exchange of information at this point. So, Lou, your thought on why you wanna remove this?
I think we should be telling, you know, somebody who owns a property, uh, that they can't build on a crest line, on a ridge, or whatever. I don't, I don't see what that's got to do with, uh, why that even should be in there.
Well, like, again, okay, I'll just note, so... Good, I'm pretty sure it doesn't say we can't, it just said avoid it, but...
I think the same could be said for the paragraph F, you wanna move on, Sam?
And this is on just new builds, new, new, new commercial? I'm not even sure if we have ridge lines.
I don't think we have any ridge lines in our commercial zone, but it could be wrong.
All right, so, I'm gonna read you back through this, I'll finish like, like I thought, right? So, Lou, doesn't think commercial property owners should be told where to build? That you wanted?
No, I didn't say it like that. I said that ridge line should be avoided. I don't think that we should be telling them that. Where they should be able to put it. I didn't say that, uh, I don't understand what ridge lines has got to do with it. If the property, if they've got a piece of property, and it's three acres, and they're four acres or five acres, and they wanna put a building on a ridge, and that happens to be in the middle of the property, why should we tell them, no, they can't do it?
Again, I don't think we're saying, no, if you just says avoid it.
Well, avoided, that means that if you can put it someplace else, they could tell them to put it someplace else, and then suppose they didn't wanna put it someplace else? I don't think it should be in there.
So, commercial properties should not be told where to build the property? On crest lines?
That's the way you wanna put it.
Well, um, well, it's right the way you want it, or right in the sentence, in the paragraph, but...
I said I didn't think that we should, we should be telling somebody on a commercial piece of property that they can't put their, uh, building on a, a, a ridge line. when they own the property, that it happens to be the center of the property. I don't understand why that has to be even in there.
All right. Okay, F. Uh, the adequacy, type, and arrangement of landscaping, screening, buffer zones, and open space. Clearance of mature trees and clusters of trees shall be avoided or minimized. Where practical, trees with a diameter exceeding eight inches measured three feet above the base of the tree that must be removed because they are located within a specific area to be built upon shall be replaced with an equal number of trees with a minimum caliber of one and a half inches unless there remain at least eight trees of at least one and a half inch or larger. Suitable shade tree species suitably spaced. So, Bobby said you have a concern with this one?
Well, I think it could fall under the same category as number three, I mean, again, I mean, that's putting out a lot on people to have to replace trees if they don't wanna, maybe they don't want trees and all those trees on the property. So, if they cut trees down to build a building, why should it be a requirement for them to replace the trees?
Okay, so, I'm trying to explain, Bob.
I agree with that myself.
So do I.
So, um, your concern is, uh, yeah, I just wanna try to make it a sentence, Bob, now, so, Bob. Concerned that, I'm gonna say owner, is that good enough, owner of property should not have to replace trees, should not.
I mean, that should be up to the owner.
Well, I'm just trying to capture your, your thought, that's all. Should not have to replace trees that were cleared to build house or structure. Trees that were, place trees that were taken down to build structures. To build structure. Okay, Bob, concerned that owner of property should not have to replace trees that were taken down to build structure. Go very hard? All right, so. All right, G. Uh, G, in the case of applicable multifamily dwellings, the adequacy of common property or open space for play areas and informal recreation.
So, now just for clarification, is that saying that they've gotta leave a certain amount of their property open or recreational? Again, I.
Well, I think, and again, I think the reference here is multifamily dwellings.
Okay.
So, I, and, you know, I'll make a note, and maybe the, uh, the board's gonna explain it, but I kinda think of it right now, if you went down to inner city and you had a three-flat, uh, building, and you had a backyard, it was, you know, twelve by twelve. I think what they're trying to say is if you have a multifamily dwelling, that you have enough property in the back that, you know, if it's side-by-side multi, well, and it, you know, one person gets a porch, another person gets a porch, but.
Okay.
So.
We love that one, though.
Um, Doug?
I don't wanna hurt you.
Bob, or, uh, Joe?
Yep.
Lou? And Bob, you're okay? All right, hey. All right, H. The adequacy and means for complete disposal of stormwater and sanitary waste, water supply for fire protection and consumption, fire and emergency vehicle access, solid waste disposal and removal. All drainage networks shall be designed to ensure minimal disturbance of pre-development water course patterns. Stormwater management and erosion control measures shall be utilized where needed to minimize the adverse off-site impact. Disturbed, and if necessary, undisturbed areas must be planted with appropriate vegetative cover to reduce erosion and runoff volumes. Um, Doug?
Yeah, I, I like that one, but you get the same scenario we had on Quackum Bush Road, now would it, does that refer to that? We just had a deal on Quackum Bush Road, does that refer to that?
This is, again, I think the chapter is Site Plan Development, so this could be news.
Or new.
No, just a moment.
That's what she said.
Yeah, that's a nice question, goes to the pre-development water course patterns. So, if before anybody builds, there's a natural water course, you know, drainage route that goes through there, you should do the least amount to disturb that because you're gonna be changing that, and that's, goes back to longstanding principle of common law. If everybody knows that the water goes a certain route through the land, you shouldn't be, when you're developing, changing that so that you dump water on your neighbor's property.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is, does this, is this like the deal with Quackum Bush Road?
Well, we don't know if that was always that way, if it was always that way, then that's, you know, that isn't the rule.
I think that would be different.
This is for new development.
Right.
Yeah. So, um, Doug?
Yeah, I agree with it.
Joe?
Yes.
Lou? Bob?
Yes.
I. The adequacy of structures, roadways, and landscaping in areas with susceptibility to ponding, flooding, and/or erosion, including temporary measures during and after construction. Clearance of mature trees, clusters of trees, and vegetation which stabilize steep slopes should be avoided and minimized.
I agree with that.
Joe?
Yes, sir.
Lou? And, uh. J, the protection of nearby properties against noise, vibration, dust, odor, glare, unsightiness, and other objectionable aspects.
What other objectionable aspects are we talking about?
I can probably make a couple jokes here, but.
Well, what if there's, somebody's building a house and there's already a farmer in it?
I, I don't think it would be an objectionable, uh, view.
I don't think fire would be there.
So, let me read it back, so. The protection of nearby properties against noise, vibration, dust, odor, glare, and unsightiness or other objectional aspects. I'm assuming this must mean during the construction phase?
Or the new construction itself, so. Having a little football stadium with bright lights that are shining onto your neighbor's property, and have loudspeakers that are, you know, spilling noise over, you know, the farm next door and disturbing his cows, that's, that's what we're talking about. Impacts of the new construction.
Doug?
Yeah.
Uh, Joe?
Good.
Lou? And Bob?
Yes.
I guess. Okay, grading shall be permitted only where it is necessary to preserve, match, or blend natural contours and undulations of the land or to compensate for geologic hazards and adverse soil conditions which may affect the future stability of the development due to potential slope failure. Alteration of pre-development site characteristics shall be minimized to reduce to the maximum feasibility extent, grading-related damage, and to avoid disturbance of existing wetlands and environmentally sensitive areas on and off-site.
I agree with it.
Joe?
I agree.
Lou? Bob?
Yes.
L, natural features and resources such as lakes, ponds, streams, topsoil, and trees shall be preserved and incorporated into the final landscape and other development whenever possible.
I agree with that.
I agree.
Lou? All right, section one thirty three, uh, section one thirty seven dash three. Uses subject to site plan approval. The following uses as defined and listed in the Prince Town zoning law shall, will require site plan approval for any change in use if permitted or building permit be issued. Section A, principal uses as follows, so, you can see, A, that, before we look too much further here, that, um, the high, but the sections highlighted in yellow and underlined are suggestions by, um, E code, or, sorry, general code, the product E code. So, principal uses as follows, all listed under section two hundred dash twenty F, residential lot reduction. A two, all listed under section two hundred twenty-two A, section two, multifamily districts. Principal uses as follows, section three, all listed under section two hundred twenty-three C, one and two, planned residential districts. So, the opening, oops, the opening paragraph, um, one thirty seven three, uses subject to site plan approval, following is defined, and then principal uses as follows. So, basically, it's like they're just reformatting.
Those, uh, numbered sections.
To line what's suggested in section two hundred. Um, Doug?
Well, we haven't got to two hundred yet, so.
So.
Well, this is, I think this is what part of E code is trying to do, is aim. Our laws, along with all the other laws, are fairly integrated that there's gonna be references back and forth, and I think as Paul and some of the other, uh, residents have highlighted that, you know, one section says a four-foot fence, another section says a ten-foot fence, or, or a setback two feet versus five feet. I think this, what they're trying to say is like, so we're not only reformatting it and changing a couple of sections, section numbers to align, you know, so everything's accurate, um, I think that's, basically, those changes are, is just to, you know, reformatting. I could be wrong, Mike, but.
Yes, just to cite to the correct section in the newly-numbered zoning chapter as, to be the same section as was under the current law. So, it's the same three uses that, uh, site plan applies to residential lot reduction situation smaller than normal lot, with multifamily district uses, and your planned residential district uses. Those are the ones that are subject to some kind of you.
Doug?
When we get to two hundred, then that's what we do, right? Then we say yes on Quackum Bush Road.
Well, it'll have to be consistent with this.
So, if I say yes on this one, and then we get there and I don't like it, then.
Now, it has to be consistent.
Well, I, oh, let me try to answer this, so, in section two hundred, the old chapter is two hundred, and maybe I can correct if I go wrong, the old chapter is two hundred dash sixteen, and the name of the chapter was residential lot reduction. When they're reformatting this, they're saying the new section is two hundred, and it's been renumbered to two hundred dash twenty, but the paragraph of the information in the residential lot reduction is still there. So, when we get to section two hundred and we don't like that, let's say we wanna take, let's say we wanna make some changes in that, that section. So, you make a change, but the chapter number is still aligned.
Oh, all you talked about the number.
Yeah.
Right, and then if we did say, you know what, we don't even want that one, come back to this and say, strike that old section A one, I'd go for that, okay?
Me too.
Bob?
Yes.
All right, B, all permitted uses listed under C one and C two commercial districts. Do I just, with one exception, Mike, is that has to be in here, or is that?
Well, one is just a footnote to the address note, C chapter two hundred zoning.
Okay, that's just. All permitted uses listed under C one and C two, or, two, C two commercial districts. Modifications to existing single and discretion double, they put two-family dwellings in there. Dwellings conducted pursuant to section two hundred dash fifty-two farming operations pursuant to article seven, and accessory uses listed under section two hundred sixteen B of the zoning law shall not be required site plan review in the C one or C two districts. So, obviously, they're changing the word double to two-family. That's their suggested change. Bob, or, I'm sorry, Doug?
So, it's the same thing, right? When we get to two hundred, we're gonna.
We're gonna go through two hundred chapters, and we're doing here, yeah. And then again, if we change, uh, a section two hundred dash whatever chapter, then we come back and go, okay, you know, we'll discuss that, that note, like, number two over above, or so.
Whatever. I agree with it.
Okay.
Bob?
Yes.
All right. C, accessory uses as follows, all listed under section two hundred, formerly sixteen, renumbered as two hundred F, residential lot reduction. Two, all listed in their, in the multi, uh, MF, multifamily district listed under section two hundred, formerly eighteen, now twenty-two, B two. Three, all listed under section two hundred, formerly nineteen, now twenty-three, C one, planned residential districts. C four, C four, any accessory in any district which occupies more than twenty-five hundred square feet of, uh, land area. And then D, special uses as follows, any special use regardless of district. So, C and D.
So, it's the same things we just said.
Yep. You're better, sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, uh.
I'm good.
Joe? Lou? That's C and D, okay, and Bob?
Yeah.
All right, one thirty seven dash four, application and transmittal, so this is highlighted, um, I guess there's a couple changes. A, that, um, general code, the company, E code, the product, want, are suggesting that we consider. Changing from three to six, six complete sets of applications of an, no, let's start again. Application transmittal. Scratch three, make it six, complete sets of an. Scratch three, make it six, complete sets of an application for site plan approval, and one digital copy of all application, application materials shall be filed with the code enforcement officer, and must be included in the material and information as required by section one thirty-seven dash five, and required fee as law law in the Prince Town Consolidated Fee Schedule. Upon receipt of such completed application, the code enforcement officer shall transmit was two, now four copies of such applications to the planning board, and one copy and a digital site plan application materials to the town planner. So, there's a couple things in here that I want to hopefully explain over a little bit, so, you know, as Loretta and everybody's been working on the, trying to get off the paper world, um, and try to go to soft copies, so we're asking, in my business, you know, we send out the project, and the installers get a hard copy, but you also get a soft copy of blueprints, the specs, et cetera. Uh, and that's what we're suggesting here, is you can, the application applicant, you know, instead of giving us six hard copies, give us six and one, give us a digital copy or a soft copy of the application. So, what my theory was, and working with Loretta and again the RFP people, is that sooner or later, get rid of the paper copies, so we don't have, you know, just balls and balls and balls of paper, of paper. You know, after it's been approved and everything, now you just have a soft copy, so, you know, if Nick needs to go in and, let's say, in five years, he, there's gotta be changes, and he just goes in and looks at the soft copy, and then you can print it out, you can always print it, um, God bless him. So, that's the thought, is to try to get away from the paper world a little bit, try to save it as a digital copy, um, you know.
You're still doing the paper, or you just sent six copies?
Right, during the application and transmittal phase, during the application phase, um.
Soft copy you want when they're all done?
Well, two, actually, one's before and one after, because after, after the product's done, you always have the red line, right?
Why do you need six, what was matter with three and one digit?
Well, I think, and I'm gonna speak out of school here a little bit, maybe Vic and Pat can explain it, but I think, in a new application concern, I'm just guessing, if it decides that some, a hard copy's gotta go to the county, usually the lawyers get a copy, each members or a couple members of the board get copies.
Yeah, I mean, we, we need a map to look at, you know, we need, I mean, not everybody comes in with a laptop and can look at it, and pretty much, the maps are usually about this big, so you need, you know, we like to share them at least, so we don't need fourteen copies, so, we said six, could, would be kind of a, you know, a reasonable number, and then digitally, we can, I can send it around before the meeting digitally, so people can look at it on the computer if they want to before they come to the meeting. But, it's really best to have the map out, open in front of you when you're talking to an applicant, and be able to have them point things out to you, and, so that was the thought, was to try to share the maps amongst ourselves, and not each, have everybody have one.
You know, so, that is.
Is this for all, I'm wondering, is, uh, whether residential or commercial?
I think we're still.
It's for site plan review, for where it comes under.
We're still in site plan review.
So, it's for whatever comes up? What's the cost for doing six copies of, uh, something like that?
Depends on the size of the drawings.
Right, if you put a porch on, I'm sure it's a single page, if you build it on four stories.
I did, I've had to submit fifteen copies, and some of my projects are on twenty-four by thirty-six inch sheets, and I might have six pages to them. So, it can get pretty expensive, but for most of the part, you can do a mile eleven by seventeens, and it's not that bad.
And so, uh, again, four copies, just four copies go to the application, of the application or the planning board, so they have two working copies, and one copy goes to, uh, Ms. Laura, for her records. So, um, that's that. Doug?
For me?
Bob?
Yeah.
Alright, one thirty-seven five, one thirty-seven dash five, material to be submitted, section A. A site plan drawn to scale of not more than, used to be forty, now fifty feet to the inch, unless the planning board determines a different scale is more appropriate, illustrating the proposed development and use, and the following information unless waived by the planning board pursuant to subsection B. Section one, name and address of applicant, vendor, contract vendor, or owner and title of the drawing. The north, the section two, the north symbol, date and scale. Section three, name, address, title, and license number of the person or firm responsible for the preparation of the map. And I'm gonna pause there, because the rest gets pretty big.
That's standard procedure, right?
Right, in anything, even in my business, you know, you guys submit plans, and they're marked. So, one thirty-seven five, section A, one, two, three, Doug?
Yes.
For me? Luke, yes?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, one thirty-seven five, section four. So, there's some materials to be submitted. The boundary lines and dimensions of the subject property, existing subdivision lots, available utilities, and easements, streets, railroads, and public right-of-ways, crossings, and are contiguous, and are contiguous to the subject property. So, these are just some of the items they want to see on the blueprint, or the site plan. Want me to just keep going for a couple more?
Yeah.
Number five, any significant natural, topographical, or physical features of the property, including, but not limited to, watercourses, floodplains, ponds, swamps, New York State designated wetlands, trees in the excess of eight inches in circumference measured at a height of three feet, and existing slopes in the excess of four feet in one hundred feet. Six, structures and circulation, one set of preliminary plans, elevations, and sections of proposed structures and roads, showing proposed location, use and design of all buildings and structures, including any proposed division of buildings into units of separate occupancy, and location of drives thereto, and showing the proposed location of all roads, curves, curved cuts, parking spaces, loading spaces, accessory, access aisles, pedestrian walkways, and fire lanes. The total floor area, floor area in ratio, floor area ratio, and the number and size of dwelling units by the number of bedrooms should also be shown if applicable. Six A, the A for mentioned building plans shall include type, grade, texture, color, finish of exterior structure, material, exterior architectural design, window layout, and other prominent visual features. Section seven, landscaping, preliminary grading and landscaping plan to include the extent and amount of cut and fill for all disturbed areas, including before and after profiles of typical development areas, parking lots, and roads, and proposed landscapies and buffer yards, including the type, location, and quantity of all plant materials, location and height of fences, retaining walls, or screen plantings and type, and kind of building materials or plantings to be used for fencing or screening. Wells, location of all wells on site, in addition to quality and test yields in gallons per minute of all wells which are proposed to be used for the project requiring site plan review, demonstrating compliance with applicable standards. Nine, stormwater management, the applicant shall employ a methodology accepted by its community county Soil and Water Conservation District to provide the following required information. A, stormwater pollution prevention plan, the applicant shall prepare and submit a stormwater pollution prevention plan as required pursuant to chapter one fifty, stormwater management. The stormwater, stormwater pollution prevention plan shall meet the performance design criteria and standards set forth in chapter one fifty, as amended by eleven fourteen, two thousand and six, local law number eight, two thousand and six. I'm gonna keep going unless you guys say.
Why don't we just catch up?
Alright, so we're down to, we went from four to nine A, alright, yeah, nine A. Doug?
I'm good.
Joe?
Good.
Luke?
This number five, this is for any site plan review, this is for any application that's going through, for even a building one house?
No, you, you, again, it's only those things that are subject to site plan review that we talked about before. It's basically the commercial development, multifamily development, and undersized lots.
Okay. So, okay, yes, or?
Yeah.
Bob?
Yes.
Alright, nine B, design and placement proposed permanent and temporary vegetative and structural, i.e. drains or culverts, measures for stormwater and erosion control. Nine C, if existing culverts or other structures will be used, the capacity of these must be shown. Ten, sewage disposal. Ten, sewage disposal, A, an elevation of soils on the site, including the percolation test and sewage treatment system plan as designed by a licensed professional engineer which meets all applicable standards. B, the applicant shall obtain all necessary approvals for proposed sewage treatment system prior to the town pool or site plan application where applicable. Eleven, lighting, power, and communication facilities, location and design of lighting, power, and communication facilities. Twelve, signs, location, design, and size of all signs. Thirteen, outdoor storage, location of any outdoor storage, and other accessory uses. Fourteen, commercial and industrial uses, in the commercial districts, specific uses of proposed and the number of employees or which building are designed. The type of power to be used in any manufacturing process, and the proposed method of disposal of such waste or byproducts shall be known where applicable. So, wanna pause there for a second? Up to fourteen, so ten, A, ten B, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen.
I'm good, Luke.
I'm good, too.
Bob?
Yes.
Fifteen, Seeker is scratching out, Peker?
What was Peker?
Prince Town Environmental Quality Review Act, which, um, I think we got rid of, because it's been pretty much superseded by Seeker.
Seeker, no application shall be deemed complete without compliance with the state environmental quality review, Seeker, including, and you can see they scratched it, uh, the Pride Prince Town Environmental Quality Review, including where necessary, a lead agency determination, a negative or positive declaration, and submission of an acceptable draft environmental impact statement. To applause? Doug? Joe?
Good.
We've got no choice.
You got, that's C.
Bob?
Yeah.
Alright, so, ten B, they're completely scratching, do you want me to just go with it, or do you want me to just consider it scratched?
It's just moved, it's been moved, it's moved to the next page, which is what didn't fit there, so we've got, we've gone to one thirty-seven, so.
Okay, alright, oh, okay, so, the next one's actually B. Additional information, the planning board shall require other and further information or documentation as the board deemed to be necessary and appropriate to full consideration and disposition of a particular application. And C, other sources, the planning board may consult with appropriate town, county, state, and federal personnel as necessary, as may be necessary and appropriate for proper consideration of a particular application. So, B and C, which is formerly C and D. Doug?
Yeah, I'm good.
I'm good. Bob?
Yes.
Alright, one thirty-seven, six, review and decision, review procedure, so there's been some changes here. Sketch plan meeting, all applicants must have a meeting with the planning board to discuss a sketch plan prior to submitting a site plan application with code enforcement officer. All applications, or app, applicants are encouraged to submit a sketch plan application that is consistent with standards in one thirty-seven five to the planning board fourteen days prior to a regular scheduled planning board meeting. The planning board will review all materials for completeness and ensure that the application meets the standards for review. The planning board shall send, will, no, the planning board will send notification to the code enforcement officer when an applicant may be, may submit a formal site plan application. So, before we change the page. Uh, Doug?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Bob?
Yes.
Okay, so, section B, any other pages moved over here. Two, exemptions, exemptions. The planning board may waive any of the required materials listed under one thirty-seven five, and allow the applicant to submit only that information or documentation which it deems necessary for review of a particular application. The planning board chair may waive the required sketch plan meeting, and it may, and allow the applicant to submit a site plan direct, site, site plan application directly to code enforcement officer for transmittal to the planning board for review. Three, upon receipt of site plan application, the planning board shall determine if all of the information necessary for the review and required by this chapter has been provided, and determine if the application is complete and sufficient for the public hearing. A determination by the planning board that an application is complete shall not preclude the planning board from requesting additional information from the applicant, should new information arise during the review of the application or in the public hearing. If the planning board issues a proposed declaration pursuant to Seeker, article eight of the New York State Environmental Conservation, Conservation Law, the application will not be deemed complete until the planning board accepts a draft environmental impact statement as complete as provided by Seeker implementing regulations. Unless the planning board requires additional information from the applicant, a public hearing shall be scheduled within forty-five days of the first planning board meeting after the date of the application is submitted. So, let's take a break on section two and three.
Mike, um, that's supposed to be sixty days, somehow that got, the, the last day, forty-five days, that was one of the things that we were trying to fix, that we had forty-five days, and we never do. It was supposed to be sixty days, I, I think we must have missed that one, because we changed all the other ones.
Alright, so the board hopefully is okay with those changes, but we'll see, so, uh, section two and three changed as noted by Pat in the last, uh, two sentences there, within sixty days of the first planning board application, planning board meeting after the date of the application is submitted. Within sixty days of the first planning board application, planning board meeting after the date of the application is submitted. Doug?
I'm good with it.
I'm good too.
Yes.
Number four, public hearing. Noticeable public hearing on the application shall be mailed to the applicant at least ten days before said hearing. Not less than five days prior to the date of such public hearing. Notes shall be published in the local newspapers stating the time, date, and purpose of the year for the hearing. The applicant and all interested parties shall have the opportunity to speak at the public hearing. If the proposal is also subject to review under the provisions of special use permits in the Prince Town zoning law, only one public hearing is required to satisfy the requirements of both this local law and the applicable requirements in the Prince Town zoning laws. Five, decision. A. The planning board shall decide upon such application within, is this sixty days again?
Yeah.
Sixty days after the public hearing has been completed regarding the application. So let me read that back, sorry. The planning board shall decide upon such application within sixty days after the public hearing has been completed regarding the application. The planning board shall either approve the application, approve it subject to certain specific modifications, and/or condition or disapprove the site planned application. The time within, the time within which the planning board may render its decision may be extended by mutual consent of the applicant and the planning board. The planning board shall issue a report of its decision setting forth the supporting facts for its determination. Failure of the planning board to decide within sixty days of the completion of the public hearing or such longer time as may be agreed to by the applicant shall be deemed approval of the applicant, application, and plans. The decision of the planning board shall be expressed in a report as required by subsection A, 3B below. Decision B. If the planning board approves the application, then it shall grant the applicant final site plan approval subject to the requirements of Section 137-7 of this chapter. If the application is granted conditional approval, the applicant shall, within six months, submit a modified plan to the planning board for reconsideration. The planning board shall render a decision on the modified site plan within forty-five days following the receipt of the modified site plan by the planning board. Oops, sorry, sixty. Let me read that back. The planning board shall render a decision on the modified site plan within sixty days following the receipt of the modified site plan by the planning board. If more than six months has elapsed since the date of the planning board, since the date of the planning board granted conditional approval of a site plan, the planning board shall, or the planning board may require re-submission of a new site plan for further review and additional revisions prior to approval. B. Standards for review. The planning board review of the site plan application shall be guided by the standards listed in 137-2. So, going back, it's section four, section five, A, B, and then B. Then the sixty-day notice is changed from forty-five. Doug?
Yep. Yes.
Where does the town board group plan to put any of these decisions?
Site plan approval? In the site plan.
So the town board has no say in any of these decisions? Is this what we're saying?
You and your point of members of the planning.
And we don't belong.
I think we should, something should come back to the town board for our input on it. We're looking at a, uh, a large project. I don't know how anybody else feels.
I know I read it here someplace today that if the planning board turns it down, the town board can vote on it and call a decision. Or if it's approved, so either one. I read that in here someplace today.
Where'd you read it?
It was in one of these I read today, I see. The planning, the town board, if the planning board turns it down or accepts it and the town board doesn't like it, it goes back.
That doesn't say that in here though.
That doesn't say it in here, but I know I read it today.
I did see that. Well, it should be in this section.
You would probably be looking at 137-7, the final site plan approval that they get to here.
Gee, that doesn't say that in 137-7.
No, if there were going to be any changes, it would go there, but from the very beginning, the authorization here is at the beginning of this whole chapter, 137-1. And it says, "In accordance with 274A of the New York Town Law, the planning board is authorized to review and approve, under conditions, or disapprove all site plans."
And also said in 137-7 that the building permit should be issued or denied.
Right, because as part of this law that was adopted, it gave the planning board the authority under New York State Town Law, 274A, to review or approve site plans.
Don't you think that the town board should have something to say about this?
It says it was adopted by the town board in November 4th, 1984. It amended to 87.
Final approval section was amended in 2006. Not that long ago.
Well, I did what I did.
So, is that a yes or no?
I think that something that the town board should have something to say about this. It's my opinion.
So every application that comes through? The town board's gonna do all the site plan approvals? Go through the whole process?
I think that there's a certain, uh, large project that's gonna become, uh, in the town that the town board should have to have something to say about. Talking about somebody who wants to build a house. Talking about any large project that's gonna be in the town. Not that we're gonna have that many, but I think we only built two houses last year in this town.
Bob?
I'm okay with up to where we're at. In regards to what Lou's referring to, I think that probably, um... You know, like if it was gonna be a humongous, uh, sub-development division or a big Walmart, a big project like that, you know, I think that's what he's probably referring to as far as a board mind. I don't think that we need to have every application come to the board.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
But I mean, that would be considered a humongous project, huge project. And I think all you're saying is we should, at the fore, should be aware of and have some say. But other than that, I'm okay with things like this one.
So, section four through five, A, B, and then B?
Yes, I'm sure.
So four, one. I'm assuming you're a no, that you're saying Lou's a no.
On what, the, uh?
Section four, section five, A, five, B?
Can we put a section in there saying that it was a big project, the town board gets involved in it? The planning board and all them do the work, but then when the time comes at the end, we should have something to say about it.
Okay, so...
Put it in at the end of, end of all lists, when you get all done, put it on the end.
So maybe A, so we have five, A, five, B, and then we have B. You saying something about like a section C there?
Yeah, or wait till the end of, when we go through all lists, at the end. You only got, what, half a page?
Um, alright.
Put it at the very end.
It has to be 137-8?
Or 137-7?
Seven, in that section.
Okay, so let me back up here a little bit. So, four, five, five A, five B, and B are okay. Doug?
Yeah.
Joe?
Yes.
Lou? 137, C. Final site plan, site plan approval amended on 1114, 2006 by Local Law Number 8, 2006. Final site plan approval shall be granted provided the planning board has approved the site plan and provided that all fees and reimbursable costs are paid by the applicant. The planning board chairman shall affix his signature to the site plan which shall constitute final approval. He shall forward a copy of the approved plan to the code enforcement officer who then may issue a building permit or other appropriate document for the project. The approved site plan shall include the stormwater pollution prevention plan accepted by the planning board, which plan shall be consistent with provisions of 150, Chapter 150, Stormwater Management. So... Lou? Wants to add, um, language? That town board should have... Should have... Final approval or some sort of approval?
I should think that.
Which one?
I should think that the town board should put their stamp on it before it goes to, uh, the building permit is issued.
Shall have approval... Shall have approval...
Big projects?
I would say we have approval.
Big projects. And maybe just let the advisory committees here make a recommendation on what considered a big project.
I think you would have to define big project.
Unless we're asking you guys to define it.
No, we wouldn't do it. What, what are we gonna do?
You are advisors though.
Huh?
We're asking you to advise us.
Why?
Because that's what we're asking you to.
I don't think there's any reason to define it.
I know, but we're still asking you.
I don't know, I wouldn't know where to begin.
That's why you have a committee?
I don't think any of us would know where to begin.
Paul?
I think a developer might have some difficulty going through the entire process where the planning board only defined out that the town board wasn't any of it.
Yeah, I'd like to know how that would play out because if we follow the law and do all the approvals and make them do everything that was required of us...
And then go through the hoops they requested by the time.
And then you say no, I think you're looking at a lawsuit at the very least.
Vic?
I, I think that the town board does have influence without putting another law in there for final approval. First of all, you guys appoint all the members, so appoint people that are like-minded, um, to carry out what we might want. You don't have to reappoint people if you don't want to reappoint them. You can come to planning board meetings, you can even serve on the planning board. At the end, you don't like it, you can do what happened with the Ivanella situation two months ago. Take it front of the ZRC and have it undone.
So...
You don't need what you're looking for, I think you have enough already.
So to Lou's concern, that if you guys could comment on it and provide your feedback, Lou's asked before, at least that's the process we agree to here tonight is we have a concern, and Lou's got a concern that he wants, you know, the town board to approve, so we're gonna submit this to you guys. You guys can make your comment and make your recommendation back. Fair enough, thanks for what you read to? Yep. Mr. Myers?
Yeah.
No good?
Yeah.
So I wrote that right, Lou?
Yes.
Okay. 137-8, professional services. During administration of this local law, the planning board shall, may now, during administration of this local law, the planning board may engage the services of an engineer, architect, surveyor, attorney, or other professional or expert as deemed necessary to complete review for a particular permit or project or to solve a particular dispute. The fees for such services will be billed to the town who shall be reimbursed by the applicant or the individual seeking relief. Applicants shall be billed on a monthly basis for such charges by the town clerk as invoices are received by the town. No permit or project approval shall be granted to any person for any proposal until all outstanding fees owed to the town are paid in full. Uh, so actually, um, it's okay. 137-7 with the note, and 137-8, professional services. Doug?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Joe?
Good.
Lou?
No.
Which one?
137-8. How do we know that, uh, what the town board should know, what the cost is gonna be for an attorney or any person that they decide to hire? We just can't, uh, give approval, and we end up with some astronomical bill. We should be, uh, we should be included in this and prove the, uh, find out how much it's gonna cost before we, uh, hire, uh, somebody.
But we, but we get reimbursed.
Reimbursed.
Yeah, they didn't reimburse you, yeah. They got, applicant has to pay.
And that's the new process, because we fell out of it now. The new process, we've engaged Laura to do with the planning board, zoning boards. Every night that the planning board meets and the zoning board meets, Laura's already got, it computed on the spreadsheet saying, you know, tonight's applicant A owed a hundred bucks for, you know, seventy-five for lawyer, twenty-five for the engineer, whatever it is. And we submit it that night to the town clerk, the town clerk submits it to the applicant for payment. So we get reimbursed for everything, and what they're saying here is, you know.
They don't give a permit.
You don't get a stamp until you pay, you get paid, you made a mistake.
Well, I know that, I know we, we got an outstanding bill or whatever it is.
Right, no, yeah, so.
And they haven't paid, we're going to be stuck paying, so.
No, 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 no. We're going to fix that. That's in the process. So, I guess back to, uh, to this. And Mr. Myers?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so just to review, one thirty seven seven with the changes as noted by Lou or requested by Lou, and then one thirty eight is fine. Cool?
Yes.
One thirty seven nine, certificate of occupancy. No certificate of occupancy shall be issued until all improvements shown on the site plan are installed or a sufficient performance guarantee has been posted for improvements not yet completed. The sufficiency of such performance guarantee shall be determined by the planning board after consult, consultation with code enforcement officer or, or other designated professional. Um, one thirty seven ten, inspection. The code enforcement officer shall be responsible for the overall inspection of site improvements, including coordination with the planning board and other officials and agencies as appropriate. Um, one thirty seven eleven, integrate, integration of procedures. Whenever the particular circumstances of a proposed development require compliance with either the special use procedure in the zoning law or the requirements of the town land subdivision regulations, the planning board shall attempt to integrate as appropriate site plan review as required by this local law with the procedural and submission requirements for other compliance. So, one thirty seven nine, one thirty seven ten, and one thirty seven eleven.
Yes.
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 One thirty seven twelve, interpretation. Inter, interpretation and application. The provisions of this local law shall be held to be minimum requirements adopted for the promotion of public health morals, safety, or the general welfare. One thirty seven thirteen, conflicts with other laws. Where the requirements of this local law are at varies with requirements of any other lawfully adopted rules, regulations, or local laws, the most restrictive or that imposing the higher standards shall be ever. So one thirty seven twelve and one thirty seven thirteen.
I'm good with it.
I'm good too.
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Man, I'm way too much fun. Okay, so, for the record, and, um, we're on, almost on, almost on Ben's overtime. Um, one thirty seven one's good, one thirty seven two is all good. Except for, on page one thirty seven two, section three, and F. Lou wanted to make suggestion on three, Lou doesn't think, uh, I'll try to rewrite this, Lou, but I understand what you're saying, about commercial property on, on a ridgeline. And then F, Bob, you're concerned that the owner of property should not have to replace trees that were taken down to build structure. Who goes on after, and Lou?
Yes.
Okay. So G, H, I, J, K, L are all good. One thirty seven three, A, B, C, all good. One thirty seven four, good. One thirty seven five, A, one, two, three, is good. Uh, all of page one thirty seven four. On page one thirty seven five, A, B, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen are all good. B is struck out, exceptions. Um, B formerly C and C formerly D are good. One thirty seven six, review and decision. Uh, A, one is a yes. Uh, page one thirty seven six, two, three, four, five, five A, five B are good. So one thirty seven six is all good. On top of one thirty seven seven, B is good. Section one thirty seven seven, a request by Lou. Lou wants to add language that town board should have approval for big projects. So, one thirty seven seven, one thirty seven seven with note for review. One thirty seven eight is good. One thirty seven nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen are good. Doug, overall agreement?
Yes.
Joe, overall agreement?
Absolutely.
Lou, overall agreement? Bob?
Yes.
Overall agreement?
Yes.
All right. And I think we've done enough damage. It is amazing. So. So before we go, so, I guess I forgot about the front, the back end of this project. So, let me think here. So, you know, obviously, I'll get a soft copy of this, I'll send the note out to Pat, Vic, and Paul. You guys will meet with your teams, provide written feedback. You can meet, you know, it's up to you if you guys want to meet all together or, or not, or individually by committee or board, it's fine. Are you guys okay with that?
Yeah.
Yeah?
No, I mean, uh, Doug?
Yeah.
So individually or however they want to do it. Bob, you okay with that?
Sure.
Lou?
Yes.
And Joe?
Yes.
So, the boards can meet collectively or individually, provide your written responses back for the boards, town board's consideration. And if we go with our final thing, um, final thing, you know, whether we like their changes or whatever it is, we can either tweak it again or say this is good, and submit it for public hearing?
And move along.
Agreed?
Agreed.
Joe?
Yes, sir.
Lou?
Yes, sir.
And Bob?
Yes.
Yep.
What's our date for our next chapter?
I'm, uh, not next week.
Well, we're on a roll, let's keep rolling.
Yeah, um, unfortunately, I kind of looked at my calendar and said, oh, it's August. We got May, June, and July. Um, and our next board meeting is.
The week was running.
So I can't meet next week, the week after that's the board meeting. You want to go, that's, um, so, not the fifth, I talked on nineteen?
You gotta. You make the board meeting fast and do a little bit that night.
What are you trying to say?
Sorry, the town board meeting, do it like we used to do it, an hour, and we're done.
Well, you can't put quality before speed, but if we got time, I'll go on to start it. You know, next chapter, I don't know how big next chapter is, but we can take a shot at a couple pages of it.
You said August nineteenth, we're going to tentatively go for it?
Yeah. Okay.
Is that our second?
Fourth Tuesday?
That's our third.
That's the third Tuesday. We can go on the fourth, we can, you know, after that, we start the agenda meetings anyway, so.
That's the one I have.
Huh?
Doing eight, so.
On nineteenth?
Well, I don't know, it's not written.
Well, tell me what you want to do here. Nineteenth or go to twenty-sixth or wait till September?
I choose four.
Choose four.
Nineteenth, if we can, can, we.
Doug, you okay with nineteenth then?
Yep.
Joe?
Yeah.
This is the last summer of August. And Lou? All right, then that's that. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, just, uh, so, just let me make a comment over here. You're going to have that, uh, family night. I don't think anybody should be sitting on those picnic tables outside because they're ready to fall into the heat. And I won't be spraying until after the, they have their family night. I wouldn't have anybody sitting on those picnic tables.
Good deal. All right, do we have a motion to adjourn at nine oh five?
So move.
Mr. Bob? And second?
Second.
Ball in favor?